Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most probably, Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Krapp?
Here.
Mensah?
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. Do we have any this evening from the commission? None. How about the city clerk?
There's some meetings to announce. The beautification commission will meet on Tuesday, June 7th at 7:00 PM. The planning commission will meet on Tuesday, June 7th at 7:00 PM. The zoning board of appeals meeting scheduled for Tuesday, June 7th has been canceled. And the historical commission will have a special meeting on Tuesday, June 14th at 7:00 PM. All those meetings are here at City Hall.
Thank you. Adaption of the agenda?
Move to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know what? I just have a question. There is no city manager report attached? Is that correct?
For this week, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Roger. Adaption of the agenda.
Say it again.
Adaption of the agenda.
Yes, move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Roqueau?
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Okay, this is public participation time. This is when you can address this commission. Please give us your name, residential address, and adhere to our three-minute rule. So the mic is open.
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain. As before, I had alluded to cutting brush on Shady Side as it comes into the community around Clinton River Drive. So, starting on Saturday, June 18th, we need you, community and the River Acres Association. Saturday, June 18th at 8 o'clock in the morning, and we're going to start at Lindsey Drive, that part of Shady Side Park, and work ourselves back to help cut brush and small trees. So, bring your cutting tools, your gloves, your gas saws, or anything else we may need. Lawn and tree service businesses are needed, and hopefully, some of them will volunteer. They don't have to stay all day. Just come in and, you know, be a part of what's going on. I can be contacted at (586) 675-3753. Either call me, text me, or email me at ruthie.stevenson9@gmail.com. And community service hours are available for this event. And it just so happens that it falls on Juneteenth weekend. And what a better way for Mount Clemens to come together. And hopefully, we'll see you all there. Businesses, community people, students that want to help out, and I appreciate any concerns.
Just a question. Ruthie, have you by any chance talked to Jeff?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Oh, of course. He was the first.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. After some, a couple people asked me some things, and I got some time to get around to it. I have some kind of unhappy numbers, which I've already told some of you about. But, one of the reasons that the group of us who didn't want to pass the millage, the reason was that we knew that you'd just grab it and run and spend it. And that's what's been happening. And even new Commissioner Krapp once asked about something that was planned on spending, was that in the budget? No. But now that they got the money, they can, you know, whizz it down the drain. Two things specifically. Since there's such a problem in the neighborhoods with sidewalks and streets. Somebody said to me, "Did you notice those streets downtown?" And I had. And then, this week, I happened to be in Sterling Heights. Took a look and went, "Oh, my God. Must be the newest fad in streets." Concrete with little curvy red concrete S shapes in it. $500,000. Yeah, we did get that as a grant. But it costed. It wasn't free. And first of all, never forget that that $500,000 that Jeff found and worked very hard to find, and I don't fault him at all. But, that's still tax money. And in order to get it, we had to pay for it, called an in-kind. At 18.5% of $500,000, which turns out to be 92.5%, and the city Mount Clemens had to pay 46.250, and the DDA had to pay 46.250. Guess where that came from? That came from Mount Clemens, too. You know why they had that kind of money? To kick in and help you with? Because you keep giving them tiff, folks. When you gonna get it? Another example. They didn't need that sign. I offered to re-letter the board out there, and I'm a little angry. Once Art Mullin left, I guess Mickey was too good to do the lettering on that board. And we pressed the DPW into service? What's with that? I'd have rather done it myself. The DPW has enough to do. And they don't need equipment. They need manpower. They need help. And they keep getting dumped on for the DDA. We don't get sidewalks. We don't get fixed. We don't get poop. And yet, the downtown gets their fancy streets. They get their sign. And that reader board, you know, that's carrying a little bit of a problem with it. Other places that have now are finding that it's a come-and-get-me-for-tort suit, because people are so busy reading, they're driving and are having accidents. And that's going to open the... But of course, I know, in our downtown with our little fancy twinkling lights and our other things that aren't Mount Clemens at all, I never represent Mount Clemens, or whatever it's going to be, now we gotta have a reader board, because it's the latest fad in town. And we just happen to have the money to give to the DDA when we don't have to. There's no obligation after 2004 and '05, when they had their debt paid. You'd just rather give it to them, because you got it to give, because you lied to us and took our taxes from us.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Monica Baker, 636 Huntington. And I'm here about my sidewalk repair. I was here at the last meeting. At the end of the meeting, when I spoke, Ms. Hill asked Mr. Brown if he could get back with me. He got back with me on May 27th. Took him a while. And he said he only got back with me because he was rereading his minutes from the meeting, and he didn't realize that he was supposed to respond to me. I did follow the chain of command. I started with Mr. Deneme as the person who tagged the sidewalks, my understanding, then I was told to contact Mr. Tingley. I did by email and Mr. Brown. Never received a response from either of them. Long story short, I have pictures of my sidewalks. I have spoken with Mr. Brown. What I've asked for is that my bill be corrected to reflect that I only pay for the two sidewalks that were in city code violation of a one-inch trip hazard. I had two flat sidewalks in between the two, that there was absolutely nothing wrong with them. Now, when I spoke to Mr. Brown on Friday, he told me that his suggestion, because the explanation that he gave me didn't make sense about how they had to rip the two up so that they could make everything even, even though the other two were on opposite ends. If you had to do that, you would have to just keep going. There would be no stopping if you had to, you know, do the two adjoining sidewalks. So, he told me that he was going to hire a consultant, engineer Kyle Seidel, from Anderson and something company. I'm sorry, I was driving and trying to write at the same time to get all of his things. He told me that the city has their own before and after pictures, but I have my own pictures. And the bottom line is, I'm asking to have my bill corrected. I don't have a problem paying for what was in code violation. You know, I understand if I were to put a pool up or have some electrical work done, of course, I would have to get a permit. And there are things that would, you know, codes that have to be met. And there is no appeals process for that. But I'm asking the city that they might want to think about, before I see on your agenda, that you want to approve another request to repair more unsafe sidewalks, that maybe you might want to come up with some kind of appeals process. So, I understand I'm not the only person that this happened. To Laura Fournier, I believe was her name, she spoke last meeting, too. She was quite upset. She had the same thing happen. She told of a party that her neighbor was able to go out and say to the contractor, "Hey, there's nothing wrong with these." And then they didn't rip them up. But I was at work. I didn't have that luxury. And her husband was disabled, and he didn't have that luxury of getting out of the house. And so, they too had to pay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sharon Miller at 36 Eldridge, which is, I live around the corner from Grand. Beautiful, wonderful, smooth, silky roadbed of Grand. I've bought my house in '72. I was gone for five years when I lived at my husband's house. We moved back here four years ago now, coming up. It's still not repaved. And I cannot recollect, and I talked to my girlfriend who lived in her house a little bit longer than mine, and she cannot ever remember seeing any type of repaving done on Grand Avenue. Now, the winter of '15, '16, I almost got on a personal basis, I thought, with the guys who put the patching work down, because they were there almost every single day. I know I passed them three times. I said, "Good work. Sorry it's so bad. Good work. Thank you for trying. Thank you for trying." It's still not paved. But I did find out from Laura, we had an informal coffee thing, that Church is going to get repaved. Now, granted, some of Church is bad. But, it's sure a lot smoother than Grand. And Grand has never been done. I don't ever remember. And I'd like to find out, why isn't it being done? That is the worst street in Michigan, I think. I've been on dirt roads, and it was smoother than that. And that's pitiful, that, you know, other streets are getting repaved again, because I know Church has been done once before. I know at least once. But, Grand has not been done, and that's a big shame. And especially, when the public school was there, when the academy was there, now St. Mary's is there, it didn't matter. Even when it was a Mount Clemens school, it still did not get paved. Not even that section of it. You'd think, "Okay, they'll do the sad section." No. And it's horrible, horrible to drive on, to the point where I'm cutting around and avoiding it as much as possible. But, it really, really needs to be done before Church, personally. Thank you.
Should we... The difference... You want to say why Church was being done, or Jeff?
Jeff, you want to address Church?
Just address the difference between why Church and not Grand.
With Church Street, we were able to get a grant to New Church Street, okay? Grand Street unfortunately is not eligible for federal funds, because it's not part of the national highway classification. It's a federal highway administration thing. It's not part of it, and it's not eligible. The majority of local streets are not eligible for federal funds.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate it. So, basically, what he's saying is, local streets, we cannot get grants. There's no federal or state money out there for grants for local streets. So, local streets have to come out of the general fund, or the local street fund, which is not funded. And Church is considered a major street. And Church is considered a major street. And your grant is considered a local street. It's like my street where I live is a local street. When that was done, we were all assessed for that street, to have it done. So, there's different ways you can go about getting local streets done. And one way is assessment to all the property owners. Am I right, Jeff? Okay. Right. But we don't define the streets. I mean, the city doesn't define the roads. It's by the state. So, that's the only... I mean, there's quite a few streets that we really need to take a look at. And I know grant is a roller coaster.
$37 million, I think, was the estimate that I just recently provided for the cost of bringing roads up to at least a good condition.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Michelle Weiss, 18200 Terra Drive, Clinton Township, Mount Clemens, DDA. I want to remind everyone that tomorrow is another City Sneakers event, and we are going to be at the Engine House. We've been averaging about 125 people at each event. They're really enjoying going through the neighborhoods and the residential area, noticing the historic homes, our museums. It's really been very successful. So, we're really looking forward to tomorrow at the Engine House. And next Tuesday, it will be at Orleans. I also would like to take a moment. I had the honor of representing Mayor Dempsey at the Ambess Post 29. Mayor Dempsey was given an award for being the Citizen of the Year. So, I would like to present you with the award that was given to me for you.
Thank you very much. Well, they used a really young picture, which is great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing none. Administrative responses to issues or questions raised during the previous meeting.
Thank you, Your Honor. In relation to something that was just discussed a few minutes ago, a resident raised the issue of a lack of an appeals process for sidewalk code enforcement actions. Consistent with code enforcement, there is no formal appeals process or committee. For example, someone questioning the outcome of a city inspection on a permit does not have a formal appeals process or committee, but would instead raise their concern with city administration at a variety of levels as they see fit. A more formalized appeals process could be part of a more formal, structured, and systematic sidewalk program. That would not describe the current sidewalk efforts that we have, which is basically that sum of $50,000 set aside for stepped-up enforcement of issues related to sidewalks. And as such, we have not instituted any kind of formal appeals process, which is not always part of a formal sidewalk program either, but it's an option if we would like to go down that route, which I state, that can be addressed if it's a preference of the commission. So, for example, related to the additional work that's being brought up tonight, if that's something you're interested in having administration set up, we can go through the process of setting up that kind of an appeals process for that work. And it's just something we have not done to this point, based on the scope of the work that we have, and to be consistent with other code enforcement work. Also consistent there, the agenda item that's being considered at tonight's meeting, the city does bring the sidewalk list covering this sidewalk work to the commission for review and approval. This was the case for the work completed in the fall of 2015 as well. Number two on the list is the Shady Side Park request, which was already covered, so I'm probably not going to go into too much detail there. But DPS was contacted, and will be ready to assist with a volunteer cleanup effort at Shady Side Park, with the dates being named. So, they'll be ready and willing and able to help out. Number three, charitable solicitation processes, that was also discussed at the prior meeting. Consistent with prior discussions with mayor and commission, city administration will review the ordinances and processes the city follows in approving charitable solicitation applications. Please look for future communication on this subject, possibly to include a work session and/or agenda item. And then, one more item that I was going to bring up, that could have been included in a city manager report, but I decided I would cover it here. The Clinton River Watershed Council has scheduled their River Day 2016. And as part of that, there's a river cleanup that's scheduled at Shady Side Park on Friday, June 10th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. If you're interested in volunteering for that, you can contact the Public Works Office of Macomb County at (586) 469-5337 to volunteer. That's (586) 469-5337. Again, it's on Friday, June 10th, at Shady Side Park, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. And the DPS will also participate with that cleanup, as the debris that's removed from the river will be picked up and taken care of by our DPS. And that's all I have for this week.
Questions? Yes. Commissioner Mensah?
I would like to see an appeals process for, kind of like all homeowner issues. I've heard about blight, you know, indifference's opinion on blight. I've heard a lot, we've heard a lot lately about sidewalks. And I think that there has also been, you know, some water sewer-type issues. So, I would like to see a formal appeals process for residents. Second, I would like to, on the charitable solicitation, when we spoke about this for one of the charities that solicited the weekend of May 5th and 6th, there were multiple complaints that we talked about after that. I would like to see our charitable solicitations limited to 501(c)(3) organizations. All of our local organizations, like the Lions Club, the Kiwanis, Knights of Columbus, they are 501(c)(3)'s. So, I think that it would eliminate some of these fly-by-night companies that come in and solicit intersections. So, I would like to see that ordinance put together as quickly as possible.
Anyone else?
I'll just piggyback on that. And as much as, I think it should be studied. I think that we should sit down and try to compose something along that line. I don't necessarily think that what was just stated should be the definite or infinite solution to the problem. But those are two areas that do need to be looked at. And I think that as a commission and city leadership, we can get together and do something along those lines. So, I would like to see that. But, that will become an article for discussion at some later date.
Workshop on it?
Workshop, yes.
Anyone else? All right, seeing none. Approval minutes from the previous meetings.
I move to approve the minutes from the May 16th meeting.
Support.
Are there any changes or questions? Seeing, no? Okay, seeing none. Roqueau, please?
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, General Business, 9A, to adopt a resolution supporting the charitable gaming license for Turning Point. Need a motion?
I move to adopt the local governing body resolution for charitable gaming license for Turning Point Incorporated.
Support.
Everybody wants to support that.
Everybody wants to take credit for that one. Okay, let's move on.
So, Turning Point Incorporated will be holding a fundraiser at Zucaro's banquet facility in Chesterfield, Michigan on September 9th, 2016. Zucaro's, sorry. I knew I was going to do that. Two people I know that pronounce it the opposite way. In Chesterfield, Michigan on September 9th, 2016. Turning Point is a domestic nonprofit corporation incorporated in the state of Michigan, operating in the city of Mount Clemens. Turning Point's mission is to provide programs and resources that enable victims, survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault to regain control of their lives. In order to conduct a raffle for the event, it's necessary for the organization to obtain a charitable gaming license from the state of Michigan. The state requires a resolution be approved by the local government subdivision, in which the organization conducts its principal activities, and that the organization is a recognized nonprofit organization operating in the community. Bylaws and articles incorporated submitted by Turning Point have been reviewed by the city attorney and are provided under separate cover for your review.
And Mrs. Karn Bates-Gazier is here.
Karen Bates-Gazier, 147 Lowood, Mount Clemens. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I think that pretty much describes it. For us to be able to do any kind of raffles, we need this to be passed by the city commission so that we can apply to the state. And we do have a big event. Our major fundraiser is September 9th at Zucaro's. It's a stepping out with the stars style event. And would love to see all of you show up there. Actually, I know that I recently sent a sponsorship to at least one member of you. If you haven't got it yet, you will. So, I'm here to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Is this the event that Mike Connors from the Macomb County Department of Planning and Economic Development is going to twinkle his toes at?
It is indeed. We get local celebrities to act as our dancers. We partner them with Arthur Murray Dance instructors. Mr. Connors is indeed one of our dancers. Judge Marlinga is one of our dancers. Kim Adams from Channel 4 is one of our dancers. We actually have, I think, a pretty interesting lineup this year. And I think Mr. Connors is going to be an interesting addition. I heard his choice of music, and I'm very excited by it.
And I am willing to pay to see this.
I've heard that from several people. So, you can buy the tickets online on our website. So, feel free.
Get those tickets out, everybody.
Turningpointmacomb.org. They're available for sale.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Roqueau, please?
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Krapp?
Yes.
Mensah?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
9B, I request city commission approval of a contract extension for the Utilities Department Management. May I have a motion?
Move to extend the professional service agreement for day-to-day management and oversight of the Utilities Department with F&amp;V Operations and Resource Management, Inc. for one year under the same terms and conditions, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the appropriate contract extension agreement as finalized by the city attorney.
Second. Okay.
So, mayor and commission previously awarded a one-year contract to F&amp;V Operations and Resource Management, that we will affectionately refer to as FVOP here, for management services in our Utilities Department. The current contract was approved at your June 15th, 2015 commission meeting. The contract expires as of June 30th, 2016. Primary advantage of this kind of relationship, this relationship with FVOP, is that it provides the city access to added depth and expertise in a variety of technical areas within utilities. When issues arise, we are not limited to the knowledge and skills and abilities of a single employee, because FVOP has the ability to bring in subject matter experts as needs and specific circumstances require. This has been a critical advantage for us in the past. As an example, the city recently experienced a major water main break that presented difficult problems. FVOP brought in a collection and distribution system expert that assisted with the resolution of the problem. Day-to-day management representatives from FVOP have made many specific and important improvements to our operations. A couple of examples, the intake from Septicallers that had provided supplemental revenue to the city over the years, had also created significant problems at the wastewater treatment plant, or the WWTP. FVOP shifted the screening point of the intake and saved the city significant staff time and dollars. Also, the status of our retention base had made us subject to daily reporting to the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, and also had negatively impacted wastewater treatment plant operations. FVOP improved a variety of equipment and process issues within the RTB, and the wastewater treatment plant now function as designed, and we've eliminated the need for Michigan Department of Environmental Quality reporting. For these and other reasons, city administration recommends extending the contractual relationship with FVOP. I strongly feel the city and our systems and customers will greatly benefit from this extension and justify this ongoing investment in our Utilities Department. The agreement will continue to reflect an hourly equivalent rate and a not-to-exceed cost. The hours and costs can be reduced as conditions and needs warrant. And we do have Blair Sealover, a representative of FVOP, who kind of serves as the general manager, if you will, over the relationship with the city of Mount Clemens here. If anybody has any questions, they'd like to address to the representative from FVOP.
Questions? Commissioner Mensah?
So, in the past, I have been adamant that we hire an in-house director, manager, department head, whatever you want to call them, for the water and sewage department. But, we received this report from F&amp;V in February. And I went through it with a fine-toothed comb. You can see, I've marked it all up. And I sat down, and I had a meeting, one-on-one with FVOP and city manager Brown. And although I continue to want a in-house person, and we have nothing on the MML, you know, looking for a utilities director, I think that when I look at the problems that FVOP has found and solved, it actually makes sense to extend this contract for another year. It's, our water resources are one of our most important things. And right now, our water has a good clarity. We have a good report. And actually, today, I found documentation from the, let me just tell you, from the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality, through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. And a question was asked a while ago about lead content in the city. And actually, the lead content for the city of Mount Clemens is less than 12, or, I'm sorry, is less than 10 milli, decaliters. It's at 4.2, according to today's report, which is a very good number. So, I think that because our water is testing clear, because it's testing very well, well under the levels for lead, and because FVOP is working on upgrading, repairing, and fixing our equipment and other conditions at the plant, I'm going to change my previous opinion, and I'm going to recommend approving this contract.
Anyone else?
I guess I'd just like to say that I do not want to continue...
and I'm going to recommend approving this contract.
Anyone else?
I guess I'd just like to say that I do not want to continue to pay this amount of money indefinitely, but I'm willing to approve the contract for another year.
I am disappointed that, one, when we, when the previous commission approved the contract, they were very hesitant to spend that kind of money. They wanted, of course, I mean, the services were appealing, but the money was just a really huge concern. And it was said that it would be reevaluated six months later, and that was not done. And I also think that we also have requested that they come quarterly with the department chairs to report with us about what they're doing and how they are, and that lack of communication has been significant. And it was addressed with the city management months ago, and it hasn't helped, it has not improved. And so I'm very hesitant to, again, extend this very, very costly contract when we, they keep telling us that it's great, and we do have some numbers that say so, but I don't believe, I can't completely 100% say this is going very, very well, and we are getting the results that we want for this significant amount of money. And I'm very disappointed that I can't say that considering the amount of money that we're paying. And I don't believe that if we spent, I think if we spent at least half of this, what we are spending on this contract, we could get a viable candidate. We did not significantly, we did not advertise at a rate that was competitive.
Anyone else?
Since everybody else has put in two cents, I'll put my two cents in. I think that they've done an outstanding job. I think that in order to get quality, you may have to pay a little extra for quality. These are one-year contracts. And at the end of this year, if we find someone that's able to take over and do the job that they're doing, I say, yeah, jump on it. But until that time, I think we need to hold on to the good thing we have and not put out to market that which we don't have, just to try to see if we can find something. It's like fishing in a very small pond. There's only one fish, you may not get it. So I guess what I'm saying is that I recommend that we do accept this one-year contract extension and continue to give them the opportunity to do the things that they've done. The things that they have done have been outstanding compared to the things that we're lacking in our water system. And if nothing else, to have safe water, I guess I'd pay a time and a half again for what they've done.
I think you should be aware of the fact that the contract, if extended, contains a provision that it's termed up all upon 30 days' notice.
Well, I just wanted to say that in light of the problems that they've had in Flint, it makes us all the more aware of what an important resource the water is. And it's very important for us to continue to provide high-quality water for our citizens.
So I guess I would go back to my original thought is that I would like to see us advertise for this position at a competitive salary. But in the meantime, I think that we should, my opinion would be to approve the contract. And I found my notes for the deciliters. For the 48043 ZIP code, this is from a report dated May 24th, 2016, again, Division of Environmental Health, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. For 48043, 190 children under the age of six were tested for lead content. Eight turned up positive, and their ratings were, it's called, it was 4.2 micrograms of lead per deciliter of blood, and the standard is 10. So we're well under that, which is a very good thing to hear.
May I also add that the report said that that lead does not necessarily come from the water source. It can come from other sources as well.
Paint. Okay. Anybody else?
All right. Hill.
Yes.
Crop.
No.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Okay. 9C, request approval to enter an agreement for inspector services in the Community Development Department for 2017 fiscal year. Need a motion?
I move to approve the agreements for inspector services between the city of Mount Clemens and Matthew M. Berman, Joseph A. Orr, Michael L. Farren, and Fusion Electric Incorporated, and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same.
Support.
So the description on the agenda item from Brian Tingley in Community Development, Matthew Berman will provide building official, building inspector, and mechanical inspector services and shall receive an annual fee of $54,000 and be paid biweekly for said services. Joseph A. Orr will provide plumbing inspector services and shall receive an annual fee of $34,000 and be paid biweekly for said services. Michael L. Farren will provide rental inspector services and shall receive an annual fee of $48,000 and be paid biweekly for said services. Fusion Electric Incorporated, parentheses, Robert Bobseen.
Bobseen.
Bobseen, I did get it right. Will provide electrical inspector services and shall receive an annual fee of $34,000 and be paid biweekly for said services. With city commission approval, the one-year contract shall become effective July 1st, 2016, and expire on June 30th, 2017. Contracts have been reviewed by city attorney and the contractors.
And there's no increase from previous year, am I correct?
This is status quo, correct.
Okay. Questions, comments? Commissioner Mensah.
So I took a look at the statistics comparing the first three months of 2016 with the first three months of 2015. And in 16, we did actually 66 less inspections. And when you look at 2015 as a whole and you compare it to 2014, we've done less inspections. So I'm kind of leery about just awarding a contract for a specific number when we don't know how many inspections will actually be done. And my number-one thing that I've complained about before is there is nothing in here that tells us that these inspections will be done at night and on the weekends when homeowners are available. In fact, in every one of them, the clause is, shall devote such time and attention and energies to the business of the city. It does not specify that it would be nice to have maybe a Wednesday night so that people can go to work and have this done at night. So I'm wondering if we explored an hourly rate when you consider that the statistics are going down? And I'm wondering why we, you know, why we haven't looked at either the hourly rate or a per inspection fee when you consider that the numbers are decreasing and have decreased since 2014?
I guess I'll answer.
So, yeah, regarding the hourly rate, it's just, it's not something we had time to do this, go around. We had spent efforts in terms of looking at the safety of the contract. There just wasn't the time to do that. Regarding the evening and weekend inspections, I'm not aware of any other communities that provide that. If they do, I'd be interested in speaking with them. There would be an associated cost to that, I think.
More importantly, these people were, at one time, full-time city employees. When the city was having its severe financial problems, they agreed to become contract employees. One reason the contract does not specify their hours and their method, their mode of operation is they would lose, and we would lose, the benefit of that independent contractor's status. If we're directing them, then they are no longer an independent contractor and they're our employee, which then would result in us assuming benefits, all of the things that some years ago, the reason they became independent contractors was to eliminate those things.
Well, I'm not saying that we should set the number of hours that they work per week or per month or anything like that. I'm just exploring how we could pay them differently so that they could...
What makes you think they would do it?
I don't know. Might want to ask them.
One of the things we, I am doing, I have discussed with Mr. Berman, who provides the building official, building inspection, and mechanical inspection, about adding an additional day. Currently, he's in the office and does inspection Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. And I think he is amenable to adding a Monday, so we are trying to increase service at that level. He is the person that deals with the most questions, being the building official from the general public and contractors.
Brian, when does their contract actually end?
June 30th.
June 30th, okay.
And the same provision applies to this contract as the city attorney mentioned on the prior contract. There's a 30-day period on that as well, as far as notice.
Yeah, we've seen a lot of variability in our permitted inspections over the last few years. In 2014, there was a big jump because we had a lot of projects come into the county and the hospital. So I think we're going to start to perhaps level out and kind of see where we're at in terms of inspections on a more regular annual basis. And we can definitely look at, you know, I think I can look at, if we approve these contracts for the next fiscal year, looking at exploring some hourly rates, especially for the electrical, plumbing. I'm not sure I would want to go that route for the building inspector slash building official, but it's something we can continue to explore.
I just want to make it clear that I have absolutely no complaint about any of these inspectors. I'm just trying to be fiscally responsible here. I don't want people to think that, you know, I'm going to say something negative about these inspectors. I am not. I understand that they, you know, are doing a very good job. I'm just looking at the bang for the buck.
I agree, and we did, you know, review the projected revenue coming in that would offset these costs, and our revenues are well above what the cost of these contracts would be. But again, we can always look at ways to try to reduce costs going forward.
Anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Crop.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
9D, draft master plan update, review and release for distribution. Need a motion?
Move to release the draft master plan update for distribution pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act.
Support, but I do have a question.
Okay.
No, you gotta read it first.
Do you want me to read it first?
Yeah, you're reading it first.
It's your priority. At least I didn't jump the gun on the support like I sometimes do, so. The Planning Commission reviewed the draft master plan update at a special meeting on May 18th, 2016 pursuant to the Michigan Planning Enabling Act, Public Act 33 of 2008, which requires the Planning Commission to review and submit the proposed update to the city commission for review and distribution. The statute now requires the city commission to review and formally release the draft for distribution to neighboring jurisdictions, public utilities, transportation agencies, regional planning agencies, and the general public for a 42-day comment period. After the comment period, the Planning Commission is required to conduct a public hearing, after which time the draft document will be submitted to the city commission for final approval. The draft master plan update has been supplied under separate cover.
Okay, Commissioner.
I just, when this is put out, are there changes still can be made on it? I assume that that is the way it would work, right?
That is correct. Changes can be made all the way up until adoption.
Okay.
We try to, we try to look at this draft being 85 and 90% complete, understanding that based on the comments during the 42-day comment period, that changes can still occur.
Okay. And what would be the process for a citizen to step up and request or look at and evaluate a change?
The draft document is going to be made available, hard copy at City Hall, other locations throughout the city, as well as on the city website during that 42-day comment period. And again, there will be a formal public hearing advertised in Macomb Daily with the Planning Commission. The timeline has that taking place at their meeting in August.
And they can contact you directly?
They can contact me directly at Community Development, yes.
Another option, too, on the website, we've added a feedback form for people to provide compliments, complaints, issues, anything like that. It's provided on the front page of the website with a button which is referred to as problem solvers, where you can click on that and provide feedback to the city on a variety of topics, anything that's on your mind. That would be something they could put in the subject line, suggestion for the master plan update. We could take it in on a variety of different ways.
Right, that was my concern. I would like to have community input and even, you know, commission input if there's a situation or problem that we think we'd like to see.
And again, anytime this commission, individual members can contact staff with comments or suggestions.
Yes.
Is there a work session planned for us to review it and sit down and discuss?
It's not part of the process. That's something if you'd like to make, you know, suggest that you'd like to do that before adoption, that's certainly something that administration will be open to. That wasn't anything that was part of the timeline or anything like that, but it's obviously anything that can be requested. If that's something that the commission would like to see, I'm happy to schedule one. We'd probably do it, you know, right around the end of that 42-day comment period, more than likely, so we'd have the benefit of as much feedback as possible. Happy to do that if you'd like to schedule one.
Anyone else?
I think, I think that scheduling it would be a very good idea. I read through this, and I'm kind of missing this section on a comprehensive capital improvement plan. I think that the MEDC for the redevelopment-ready community stressed that very clearly. So am I missing that somewhere in here?
That the capital improvement plan would not be included in the master plan. It would be a separate document that I would take from the master plan itself.
Okay. And the community economic development strategy that's in here, is that based off some of the input from SEMCOG?
Definitely. There is very, there's a direct link between the strategic planning efforts that this commission undertook. There's very specific language taken from that strategic plan and is incorporated in this master plan update.
And it's noted in several places to update our zoning ordinances with place-making principles. Has anything been presented to the Planning Commission to review? I know there's timelines in here, but is there a current push to review those ordinances? Or have we put together a committee to review those?
They're still working through this master plan update process. That would be the next step after adoption of the update.
Okay. Other than that, I think it's very nicely written. I found a few little, you know, typos that I'll be happy to show you later, but I think it's a very well-written and very comprehensive document, and I'm very impressed with it.
If I can, Your Honor, compliment Brian Tingley and his department and people that have worked on this, the Planning Commission, other people, the mayor and commission that have been paying attention through this process and participating and contributing during this process. The Michigan Economic Development Corporation, MEDC, is the home of the redevelopment-ready community certification process that we're participating in. And the city, through Brian's leadership, had taken the approach that we were going to use, the master plan update, as a way to take care of some of the needs that are missing from the city's tool chest, so to speak, for redevelopment-ready community certification. So we kind of coordinated the master plan update with our C process and tried to create some synergies there. And the MEDC has been very complimentary of our master plan update and, in fact, intends to use the Mount Clemens master plan update as an example of how to properly and successfully plan, execute, and implement a master plan update, assuming we do get to that point soon. That's something that they do plan to do, and I wanted to say that publicly and congratulate Brian and everybody that's been involved in the master plan update process for that.
Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say that I found it very interesting and found some of the ideas quite exciting, really. So I hope people take a look at it and give their feedback.
It was extremely. You rock. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Crop.
Yes.
9E, request city commission authorization to repair unsafe sidewalks. I need a motion?
Move to authorize and order the director of Public Services to proceed with the repair of those sidewalks listed in the attached report unless such repairs are performed by the property owner by June 13th, 2016.
Second.
Pursuant to Section 30.103 of the city code, city administration is requesting authorization 30 days, with the cost of repair charged to the property owner. This work would involve 46 properties and 195 flags. There are an additional 12 properties that have signed voluntary authorization forms to allow the city to repair an additional 86 flags, and that's submitted by Community Development Director Brian Tingley.
Okay, questions, comments? Commissioner Mensah.
I'm starting to trend here. I'll just go first every time. I'm wondering why they're all, except for two, they're all on Crocker. And I'm wondering if this list of repairs is within the $50,000 we set aside, other than the voluntary authorizations.
On the Crocker side of things, in the fall, we did it in a different manner. In the spring, we decided to take a different approach and concentrate on a recently repaired street that was handled within the last year or so. That would be Crocker. So the predominant activity, the preponderance of activity is on Crocker. There are other ones that are also included that were identified as trip and fall situations and things of that nature that are also added into the process, as well as the voluntary adds. So that's the reason why Crocker was chosen, just as a different MO, is we were taking this first year as a way to evaluate different ways to approach the problem. So we were going to compare our success in the spring with our success in the fall, what we learned from the fall, and what we learned from the spring, and move forward with it in the future. So that's the reason for the most activity being on Crocker.
So then, using that scenario, then we're going to see next year's program beyond Church?
It depends on if we decide to take that same approach. Like I said, we're going to evaluate the two different approaches, see if there's something else that makes more sense, or if we think one of the two was preferred.
Okay.
There are some bad sidewalks on Church, because I walk there almost every day. There are some bad places.
And in terms of the money, we expect this to come in right around the fully budgeted amount of $50,000 total. In the spring, or excuse me, in the fall, we had, I think, about $23,000 worth of activity. This should be around $27,000, so.
It'd be interesting to see how that comparison comes out. I think that it would be a good idea to try to address the needs of the general community as opposed to the main streets, and I think this is what we're hitting now, is mostly main streets. We need to probably look into the neighborhoods and see, and give them a little of their just do as well. So, you know, it'd be interesting to see how the comparison comes out and how it all works out.
Agreed.
I have a question. Does this then mean that you are not doing any other sidewalks, other than those that get reported?
There'd be, there'd be activity related to things that come to the attention of the city through reports. There would be other situations that would come through on a property that was going through a C of O process, that would have issues that would be identified. Those kind of things would be addressed, and then it would be, if there was anything particularly that was noticed and cited by an individual employee of the city, that could be brought to the attention of the city. But Brian might be able to flesh it out a little bit.
We also routinely review sidewalks during the course of rental inspections, so we do pick them up on those as well.
Okay, because we just had another recent fall, very bad, and I went and looked on the street, and the whole street, that one section, is just awful. I mean, probably every other house, there's an issue. And my concern is, my concern is, we're never going to get caught up in the program that we're doing, the way we're doing it, whether we did it, you know, the previous, and I'm not criticizing how you're doing it. I know you're trying to work something out, but we're never going to get caught up within the city. And I know that East Point has a program that they do every two years, they do their sidewalks. And I would encourage us to take a look at some of the other communities and how they're handling it. I know we've been struggling, and now we're going to try this one way, but I'm really, I really am concerned that we are neglecting a lot of areas that really are bad. And like I said, this was a major fall, and I just, I'm just concerned about that. So I really would like to take a look at this program in a different light and get some more information from other communities and tweak it, because I think we threw this program together quickly last year, at the request of an individual, you know, that had come forth, which is, I don't have any problems with that. But I don't think we've thought it out to the point that we take care of the whole city.
Well, and we keep not calling it a program. It's not, they keep saying it's not a program.
Yeah, it's not a program.
But we are significant money towards it.
So I'm just concerned that we are not going to take care of some really bad places, because people aren't going to come forth, you know, on their own, which is...
Can you just tell us the name of that site?
No, we don't want to get...
No, I don't want to get that at that point, you know. But I'm just, I am concerned, and I really would recommend that we put a committee together to take a look at this. And I know we're all tired of committees, but I just think that we need to really take a look at this program. I mean, I have gone back to the fact that we have an ordinance in place, and we should just be following the ordinance. And that means citywide and not selectively doing what we're doing. So I would recommend that we really put something together and take a look at this and see if we can come up with either a better method or just basically follow our ordinance that we have in place. That's just my opinion. Yes.
We've got a brand-new grant writer on, is there a possibility we could have that person specifically look for grants for sidewalks?
That's always a possibility, yes.
Whether they exist, something, next question, but certainly we can look.
Yeah, let's...
I know that last fall, I asked about the company that we're using to do this, if people could request them, because their rates are very reasonable. And I think at the time, you indicated that they were pretty busy and that they might have more time now, but is that a possibility, if people know that their sidewalks need to be fixed? Or can we find some other companies that have reasonable rates and...
Yeah, the, I wouldn't recommend the city getting involved in terms of picking and choosing preferred vendors or anything of that sort. That's typically something that's considered to be bad municipal practice, just from the standpoint of then any issues that come up could be, become late at the doorstep of the city, so to speak. So the way that we handle things right now, if you happen to say, like, for example, they want to be a voluntary add to the program, we've allowed that to happen. If they see the work of the company and they're happy with the work of the company, they hear about the pricing of the company's work, they're happy with that, they can approach that company and do that on their own. So that's, that's something that would probably be the best way to handle those kind of situations. And the pricing that we're getting through the vendor is far better than anybody's going to be able to get for getting an individual contractor to come out for an individual job at their property. You know, if you're going to do four or five sidewalk squares, it's going to be very expensive to have a sidewalk contractor come out or a concrete contractor come out, whereas with this company already being on-site, they have the mobilization already taken care of, the rates are much more competitive, and you're actually going to save a good deal of money compared to what you're going to get from a, from a one-at-time, two-at-time kind of a deal with a separate company. So that's how I would recommend handling that.
To clarify through all those words, if somebody wanted to be added to the program, they could call the city and still be added to the program?
Correct. That's what's happened with the voluntary adds to this point.
Yes, okay.
I wouldn't say too much more beyond, because we're to the point where we're at the money mark now. But we can always evaluate it as they call in. I'm just warning that it's not unlimited because of the funding.
But if they're going to pay, then why would...
They can pay directly, correct. I'm saying if they become, if they become part of our program and get a delay in the billing, that would be different. They contact the company directly, that's fine.
Brian, do you keep a list of contractors? And when someone comes, do you give them, like, here's three contractors that have worked in our city? You don't tell them, here's this one, here's three, and they can make their own decision?
We have a list developed, and we just, we simply base it on contractors that do work in the city on a regular basis, but we don't recommend individual contractors.
Right. That's how other cities do it also. They keep track of the contractors that work in their community, and if somebody comes, they say, here are the three contractors that we know we've worked with, and we give them, they give them the list, and you, you know, they choose, so that way you're not, you know, directing them in one direction. But I would suggest that they do look at other contractors, because I do know for one, that the Crocker House got a better price than our contractor. So, you know, encourage you to look at, you know, different ones, but I still would like to see us do something with this program. I'm...
Just briefly, Brian, your inspectors are still going around and marking, they not necessarily requiring the replacement at this time, but they can, or they can at least go through, throughout the entire year and inform people that there are flags that need to be replaced.
Correct.
Do they do that? They do that on a regular basis all year round?
No, we've been doing it as the contractor is able to do work. So we did it once in, you know, late summer for the fall work, and then we just tagged properties recently, I believe, towards the end of April on Crocker.
I would, I would suggest that perhaps you have the inspectors continue the process of marking, even though it's not a requirement that they, you know, get it done at that particular time. Maybe they don't even realize that they have a danger spot. Maybe they're not at the commission meetings, they're not hearing these, they're not reading about it or whatever. Maybe they just don't know that they have a situation that is perilous to people walking. So I would highly recommend that we mark throughout the year and then make sure that we do the ones that we have, you know, marked for our process.
The number of sidewalk flags that are tagged or marked are based on the funding that's allocated.
That's why it's easy to be looked at.
Yeah, I guess then the process doesn't need to be looked at, because, again, I know you're marking the ones that do need to be done. I don't know, maybe mark them in a different color or something, or maybe leave a note on the resident's door that you have concrete number, flag number 111 that needs to be replaced for safety reasons. I think that people need to know that they are in violation. And as Mayor said, we have an ordinance that says they are supposed to do these, that, you know...
Follow your ordinance. That's what they're there for. Why make an ordinance if we don't follow? That's...
Just a housekeeping, I guess, type of question. We were given a list of the properties and, but, and we have to, we're supposed to approve the list, or not approve the list, but these people were already notified on May 13th. So if we don't approve the list, they were notified, and by June 13th, they have to, so I don't understand why they were notified prior to us approving the list.
In order to get the work done in this fiscal year. The work is going to be encumbered in this fiscal year.
I think what you're saying, we could have gotten this in our agenda in May.
In May or in April, or, I mean, I just don't understand why, why we're doing these types of things. It feels like it's backwards to me. And so we really don't have a choice now, today, to say, this isn't really how we would, we, you know, we would like this program or not program to go, but now it doesn't matter because these people have already received notices.
Well, I think that's a thing that we need, we're looking at, when we sit down and we create the formal structure for this thing, then we can cross that bridge. Right now, I think we need to go forward with what we have so that we can sit down at a later date and say, okay, yes, we need a different structure for this. We need a plan.
No ordinance, fully, in the weather at all. Says absolutely nothing about an ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, call roll.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Cropp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
9F, request approval to continue the publication and distribution of the city newsletter through CNG newspapers. Need a motion?
Move to approve the printing and distribution of the Clement Time Newsletter on a quarterly basis at a cost of $1,390 per publication.
Second.
Past nine years, the city has published a newsletter utilizing CNG newspapers for the distribution of the newsletter through the Journal. We continue to receive positive feedback from residents and various readers, indicating they find that articles in the newsletter both informative and useful. For that reason, we would like to continue the publication. The forwarding will stay the same. At this time, we're seeking approval to publish the newsletter at the schedule and rates listed below. The cost per newsletter remains unchanged. Publication schedules and rates, it's quarterly at $1,390 per quarter for July, August, and September, being the first quarter, October, November, December, January, February, March, and April, May, and June, for a total cost of $5,560.
Questions?
Commissioner Mensah. Can you tell us how many households this is delivered to?
No, I can't say that I do.
Over 4,000, 8,000?
I can double-check what the number is.
Double-check, I think there's 4,000 or 5,000. It goes to every home.
Should be, at least everybody in Mount Clemens.
It goes to every home, whether or not they subscribe to the...
It's not a subscription, right. Journal just gets mailed to every home.
I can double-check the number.
I thought we had 4,000 households.
I thought it was more like 6,000, something.
Oh, we're all over the board, so anywhere between 4 and 8.
I think it's sort of were based on what I remember from the reports. I think you're right.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Cropp.
Yes.
Mensah.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Approval, purchase, and payment of invoices. Need a motion?
Move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support.
Any questions? Commissioner Mensah.
I guess I have a question about the budget. When we were here last, the commission declined to support the increase in the water and sewer rates, but we approved the budget, which included those rates. So I'm wondering if we're going to have a work session prior to the 20th to relook at this issue, this budget, maybe make some changes?
The intent from administration is to proceed with the budget as adopted, because instead of doing an amended budget at this time and re-adopting a new budget, allow the budget to stand as it is, because we had the timeframes met with the budget that was approved by the Mayor and Commission. And we'll do an amendment to the actual budget probably after the budget year starts to address that issue. The rates that were not, there was no support on the resolution for residential and commercial water and sewer rates. Those rates will maintain their old status, the original rate that they were at, without any increase or decrease, so we'll carry over the rates as they stand until such time as we do bring a plan forward. If you're, if you would prefer to have a work session to do it, I'm happy to have a work session scheduled on it. But we're going to do some work with an administration to come up with some ideas as to where we think we can make the new budget work, or the amendment that would be required work to address the revenue shortfall because of the lack of the increase in rates.
I just want to make sure that we're not going to just push that budget forward with those rates.
No. The rates will be carried on at their current levels.
And when do you anticipate then amending the budget?
Like I said, it was probably going to be after the 1st of the year. Here, we had a lot of competing, competing things going on in terms of time.
You mean the 1st of July?
The 1st of the fiscal year, yes, I'm sorry, July 1st. So it's going to be a change that we'd bring forward after that point in time, just based on time availability. So, and the budget is, just to clarify, the budget is a, is a projection of what your expenses are going to be, and it's subject to amendments during the year. As you know, we're going to have an amendment that's coming up, and that's one of the competing interests that causes us to not address the change to the, to the next fiscal year budget at this time. We're going to have a budget to close out the fiscal year 2016 budget, a budget amendment to close out the fiscal year 2016 budget that we're going to be processing at the June, June 20th meeting. So that's going to be taking up a lot of demand of time on the Finance Department's staff. That's going to get handled first, and then we'll address the issue with the water rates after that.
I'm totally confused on that one.
I was going to say that's...
Totally confused.
Well...
And I don't, it's an enterprise fund. It's one enterprise fund. It's one enterprise fund. So, I mean, explain to me where you're going to jockey finances around to make it work.
Well, we're looking at a couple of different things potentially about what could be done. And there is the matter of, within enterprise funds solely or not, there's budgetary decisions that are going to have to be made in terms of what's going to get cut on the expenditure side to make the balance situation come about in that particular revenue fund or that particular enterprise fund. So, just a timing question right now, and it's, we have, you know, an adopted budget that meets the requirements and met the timeframe that was required. And to keep it clean, we're going to allow that to stand and do a budget amendment shortly after the meeting on June 20th.
Are you going to do the amendment after June 20th?
For the fiscal year.
I thought you said the first of the year, the amendment to this.
Correct. So, we have one more meeting in this...
You meant the first of July.
Oh.
Yeah, the first of fiscal year.
Fiscal year. Oh, I'm thinking January, you're going, no.
No, 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 I apologize. July 1st, the new fiscal year, after the fiscal year starts is what I was referring to. So, it's a matter of weeks out.
Did you have anything to add to that?
Traditionally, budget amendments are done once a year here, but there is a quarterly review and discussion over it. You're talking about the rates that were proposed in a budget starting July 1. So, we're reviewing the revenue, the expenses, the capital items, and including how much we are putting in the fund balance. So, taking a look at all three of those items with F and V, who operate the operation, sitting down, having discussions of where items can be cut, what won't be, you know, is it an emergency purchase? Is it something that needs to be done now? Can it wait a year, as well as the way it's been structured? But we're not looking at spending any more money than what we have, and that has been the tradition, as well as, you know, fiscally responsible for that particular fund. The budget as a whole was adopted, we're proceeding with that, there's no additional capital items or anything over and above normal operations as we have right now that are planned and will be planned until we've had discussion, whether it's a work session or a presentation for a budget amendment for the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then, roll call, please.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensur.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Hill.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Mensur.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Commissioner comments?
Wait, I mean, after the resolution, there was a second...
I'm sorry.
That's consent agenda.
Consent, oh, okay. Commissioner comments? Mr. Campbell.
I just have the one thing, I agree with what the mayor said. With regards to this sidewalk concerns, we have an ordinance in place, we should just be following the ordinance, so that's all I have to say. I agree with what the mayor said, follow the ordinance, is that we already have.
Commissioner Hill.
Well, the lady that talked about Grand Avenue left, but I wanted to say that I sympathize with her, because every time I drive down Grand, it's like driving over a washboard. It's really awful. And I hope that sometime in the near future, we can start to address some of these issues. Moving along from that, the art show and the car show this past weekend were very nice. It's too bad they kind of got rained out both days, but it was good to see so many people in downtown Mount Clemens. There was an article in the Macomb Daily today about the regional transit plan, and I don't know how many of you have been following that. We have talked about it here at a couple of our meetings, but it's important that you be informed about this, because we're going to have to vote on it in November, and if it's passed, it will be a 1.2 mil increase. And according to the paper, I think that that works out to be about $96 a year if you have an average value house. So, there are some definite advantages to having it, but people need to be aware of the issue and cast an informed vote on it. And then, just again, the redevelopment update, I found it very interesting. I hope people take a good look at it and give their feedback on it. Other than that, have a nice evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Krab.
I would like to request a work session for the master plan update. I'm very excited about it. I think it has some great additions, but I would love for our entire commission to have some input before it is approved. I had the pleasure of last Thursday attending the Southeastern Michigan Council of Government, SEMCOG's Drinking Water Conference, and represented Mount Clemens for that, and was able to meet with quite a few of the directors of the water plants in our area, and it was a very interesting conference. They are talking about reinstating the monitoring system that we once were a part of, and they are also talking about having it, the maintenance of it funded. And so, that has some very promising, promising, and hopefully sustainable opportunities for Mount Clemens, especially to monitor our source. So, it's not just monitoring after we filter, but actually monitoring if there's a spill in the lake and able to shut off the plant in time before we even have to treat the water. So, it was really interesting, and I was very excited to be there. And I will be attending a SEMCOG meeting, I'm getting my miles to Detroit tomorrow as well, on how cities can, I don't want to say improve, but how they can foster relationships with entrepreneurs and have them, you know, attract them to their city. So, I'm very interested in that, and we'll report to you how it goes next time. Commissioner Coffee Talk, I have scheduled for next Tuesday, June 14th, at 9:30 a.m. at John's Family Grill, and I'm going to move my normal Saturday morning to Thursday evening to give people an opportunity who may work to meet with whoever, other commissioners who would like to come in, but me. The 16th will also be at John's Family Grill at 7:00 p.m. It's my anniversary, and if I do it Saturday morning, I may end up in the doghouse, so... And that's all I have today, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Mensur.
First, I'd like to recognize a couple birthdays. One, Commissioner Campbell, we just missed his birthday.
Happy birthday.
And Gary Blash's birthday, former commissioner and Mount Clemens employee, Gary Blash's birthday is this week. So, happy birthday, Gary, I think you're still watching these. I like to talk about where I've been in Mount Clemens, and I have been in the last month to Three Blind Mice, Bath City Bistro, Gumbos, Artist Music, Paperback Writers, and my nemesis. Where have I been, Mickey? Champagne chocolates. And there have been, over the holiday weekend, I got five phone calls at home from residents over various issues, blight, fences, other things. And what has struck me is that some of our residents, we are not being kind to each other. You know, we live next door to each other. It would be just nice, once in a while, if we were kind and gave people the benefit of the doubt, and worked things out between us before they got this big. So, that's all I have to say today.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton.
I guess I'll start with the grass clipping situation. You know, people still are blowing their grass into the street when they cut their lawns, and this is a problem, because we have an old and deteriorating sewer system as it is. And when you tax it with things that are not necessary, that's going to cause, and eventually, it's going to cost us, because they break, we have to fix them. And when we have to fix them, that means we have to spend money. And we're talking about trying to not spend money and be as fiscally responsible as we possibly can, and we just can't allow that to continue to happen. If you see a neighbor that's doing that, be kind but gentle, and ask them, please, don't blow your grass. Don't allow your professional staff, the people who you hired, come to blow the grass into the streets, into the system. I also would like to campaign for a procedure, a formal procedure written up and agreed upon for sidewalk repair and for inspections, and to start to enforce our ordinance on sidewalks. It's just a necessity. And I think we have allowed so many of our ordinances to be overlooked, and we want to write something else to replace it or to say the same thing that is already there. And I think we can do better than that. So, in the future, some of the things that we, as a commission, we as an administration can do is to sit down and figure a way that we can make these things happen. Would like to recognize Men's Health Month. Men, get your health checked out, especially see your doctor for a prostate exam if you have not already done so. There's no reason to die prostate cancer when it can be treated, can be stopped. Women, encourage the man or men in your life to get a checkup. It's probably your responsibility just as much as it is ours to just try to push those stubborn men to go get themselves checked out. Early detection can and will save lives. Men, it's no time to be macho when your health is at risk. So, my encouragement to you guys. My wife has a kind of a joke she tells, and I'll just say that quickly, but she said that when I die, and they stretch me out, there's going to be three men in black suits and ties, and they're going to be sitting there, and they're going to be crying. And the reason they're going to be crying is that they are the people from the health insurance company, and they've seen all their money going into the ground. So, anyway, I do try to stay as healthy as I can, I try to, but I'm encouraging other men to do that. Just don't get on the macho kit, go ahead and get yourself taken care of. Anyway, today is the first day of Ramadan, and that's a Muslim's month of fasting, from sunrise to sunset. I'm glad I don't have to practice that. The next thing is for the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families. Hey, everybody. The coalition's application to the CNG Newspaper Community Give Back Award was accepted. The coalition can win up to $2,000 for community programs and events. We need people to go online and vote for us. The voting window opened Friday, June 3rd, and will close on July 1st. Spread the word. You can vote as many times as you can, just to keep voting. Tell everyone you know to vote, and vote often. There is a link on Facebook page so that you can vote. The CNG website is C-A-N-D-G news dot com, and you can figure out from there how to cast that vote. There's also a link on the coalition's Facebook page, which is facebook dot com slash pages slash MT dash Clemens dash community dash coalition dash family dash death, youth family, anyway. And a long number of 1-8-0-1-3-4-5-5-2-1-1-8-6-4-3, you know, that's a lot. Just look it up. Just look it up. Anyway.
Commissioner, I did want to mention to you that we're, I had somebody whispering in my ear about that today, and we're going to have that as our announcement on the website shortly. So, we'll have the link for them, and they won't have to remember anything other than cityofmountclemens dot com.
Thank you so much. That makes it so much easier.
Patrick must have thought of that one.
I have a battle with technology, anyway, you guys all know that, so, anyway. So, it will be available to you, vote, continue to vote, because the Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families' mission is to prevent and reduce substance abuse in our community through education and awareness activities. Our goal is to create a safe, healthy community by building and supporting strong families and neighborhoods. So, you can help us do that by voting. And in fact, if anybody out there also wants to just basically contribute, because we can't do events without money, unfortunately, and you can't just walk into establishment and say, we want to use your establishment to put on a program for children, they're going to say, well, we need some money for that. So, you know, everything costs a little money, and if you know of anybody out there that likes to donate to worthy causes, this is a worthy cause, so you can donate.
And you are a 501(c)(3).
And we are 501(c)(3), yes. Okay, with all of that said, let's try a Commissioner wisdom. This is about how to succeed, all right? You can, you have to learn the rules of the game first. Then, you have to play the game better than anyone else. And that's by Albert Einstein. So, with that, we'll say goodnight.
Okay. Just a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank the American Veterans of AMVETS Post 29 for this honor of Citizen of the Year award, and thank you so much for going to the banquet for me. I really appreciate it, I was very surprised, so thank you. The other thing I want to mention, I had the opportunity to be part of the car cruise this weekend. We were able to give the Friends of Mount Clemens a 25th year, a proclamation for their 25 years of having this car cruise. I mean, this car cruise was here before the Woodward Cruise, before the Grasha Cruise, before the Roseville Cruise, and they've been doing it for 25 years, and they've been doing a great job. And when they do this, their money goes back into our community. They help support the Santa Parade, the Goodfellows, I'm trying, Salvation Army. So, the money that they raise doing these car cruises in Mount Clemens goes back into the community. So, I just want to thank them and congratulate them for 25 years of having a successful program down here in Mount Clemens. And the weather held out, pretty much, for them until later on. And I want to thank Mickey, because she helps them every year, and it's a big job. It's a big job to set that up, so thanks again for all the work, and thank you for supporting Mount Clemens. So, with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
No.
Oh, exec session, sorry. Need a motion to go into exec session.
Motion to enter into executive session.
Support.
Roll call.
Krab.
Krab. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Mensur.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, I move to authorize city attorney to take such action and file such pleadings as he deems necessary in the matter of Mount Clemens Lodge, Inc. versus City of Mount Clemens.
Support.
Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Mensur.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
I need them.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Need a adjourn.